We're coming, yeah, we got a lot of stuff to cover, so let's start with the agenda. We have the third reading then for the 2023 budget. So Jeff and I will do that one. Then we have the third reading for the tip, is that all ready to go, folks?
All ready to go, I got an envelope ready to be sent to Ohio Department of Development.
Alright, fantastic.
And they got the building moving along very quickly.
Yeah, it was nothing for a long time and then all of a sudden, there's a whole building.
They're doing better than dermatology, let's pick for a stone.
Alright, next, so we have an amendment to the budget, the final over here.
What number is it, chief?
Five.
Five?
One small change, the Ohio opioid.
Oh, yeah.
Found out that we're not getting all the money upfront like we were used to with the ARPA money and everything else, so we had to amend it for the expenditures.
So it's over six years or nine years?
Up to eighteen.
Eighteen years, a hundred and six thousand dollars, cool.
Chief will still be here.
Sure you can.
Any questions on that, folks? Alright, would you like to do one, two, three on that?
Yes, please.
With everyone, did you get it done before 2023?
I'm good.
Alright, next is Mr. Scott reconfirming his appointment to the BZA. Everyone saw his resume, which was quite impressive, I thought he'll make a good fit on that group.
Not a reconfirm, a confirm.
A confirm, I'm sorry, thank you. Alright, any opposition, one, two, three on that, so we get him rolling?
Nope.
Okay, fantastic. Alright, next is the fire collective bargaining agreements.
So if passed tonight, just so you all are aware, I believe in the history of Massa Valley, this would be the first time we would pass a contract prior to the year it takes effect. It's kind of a big deal.
It is a big deal.
We worked really, really diligently to get this completed. I'm sure the main things you guys want to know about will be the financials. What we landed on was a four percent in '23, three percent in '24, and three percent in '25. That's the major, big crux of the contract. We're right in line with what we see from SERF and the state. We actually went a little above, I think with what we've been through and where we're at. It was the right thing to do to take care of our employees. The other four outstanding, but that's the big piece of this one. There's a non-discrimination clause added in there, it's more of a legal thing to add in some language so that there's no discrimination for race, sex, color, creed, religion, origin, marital status, political affiliation, sexual orientation, disability, military status, genetic information, and so on, so that was added as well. We also rolled in their annual EMT paramedics. Monies that they got into their pay as opposed to two payments.
So that'll just raise their paycheck?
Yeah, that's not an increase.
It's not an increase, I want to at least mention some of the things. The other increase that we'll have, which will be very minute, I think, educational degree compensation. So we agreed that if you achieve a degree that's related to your job, that you should get some compensation for that. So if you get an associate's degree, it's five hundred dollars. If you get a bachelor's degree, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, if you get a master's degree, it's a thousand dollars. So trying to encourage education if it relates to the position.
It's just a one-time stipend?
It's a one-time, but if you get the one up, so like if you have the, if you get the associates and you get your bachelor's, then you get two fifty. You don't give them another seven fifty. If you get your bachelor's degree and then you get your master's, you get two hundred and fifty, it's a one-time. I think it's a nice piece to encourage.
So the top bump, no matter what and how high you go, is going to end up in a thousand dollars?
Thousand bucks.
Okay.
Then we added in the field trainer officer stipend of five hundred dollars. They'll receive a five hundred dollar stipend annually for attending a minimum of four-hour update in the field training officer program. Chief, does anything you want to add to that one?
Well, with all the hiring we're doing, we run them through a one-day academy here, they come in, they qualify for all the fire stuff. And then these are the people that are responsible to train that new employee until they're up to standard. We run it such minimums on shift, we can't be training somebody like we used to do years ago, they were like an extra. Now we need to count on them, and so they're training them every day, it's twelve hours, seven A to seven P. And then they go home, because we're not, we can't train them at night. So they come in and they have been spending a lot of time training, and it's been a very worthwhile program. We're doing it now for eighteen months, two years, something like that.
This is an extra stipend for being the person that does the training?
Correct.
And from what we gathered from the, I mean, we're talking a few thousand bucks, I don't think it's going to go, it's not a very high stipend that very many people are going to have.
Right.
The next one would be the allowance for uniforms. We're going from one thousand to thirteen hundred. Just like everything in the world, costs are going up.
You want to add the Juneteenth?
I'm getting there.
Oh, because if you're not going to order.
I'm out of order here, buddy.
Okay, that's unusual.
So three hundred dollars more, and the chief went over, and they did a lot of work together with the chief to determine a lot of the things, and there are some changes if you want to touch on that.
Well, one of the uniform, the cost has skyrocketed, the pants I'm currently wearing are two hundred and sixty dollars.
Wow.
No wonder he looks so good.
Right. That's one of the reasons why it was increased. The other big piece is the first two years of employees here full-time, they're going to receive no corporate allowance, because we're going to provide it all upfront. What we found is we learn people in, they buy uniforms, and they kind of run out of money, so then it became piecemeal. So you go to a funeral, which we don't like to do, but we have to, and here's a guy's technology sore thumb because he's not fully dressed. And in that is if they leave within three years, I believe, they owe us all that money back. So it's actually about the same amount of money we'll spend that first time when they skip the employee lounge for two years. And then now it's just the maintain and they can replace stuff as they go.
And keep in mind that the money that they get, they get that money to spend on the needed equipment? They get, do they get taxed on it when it's given to them?
They only get, our guys, fire is different than police, they have a thousand dollars on account essentially in finance and their issue of PO.
Okay, so that's different.
And we authorize all the purchases, all they get is three hundred dollars in cash, which is to maintain their uniforms at home. And, you know, when they run out of their thousand dollars on account in finance, they spend that, you know.
Well, my point to that was is, in some departments, it gets taxed when you get it.
Right.
And then it gets taxed again when you spend it.
You have to pay those taxes, yeah.
So, you know, you're losing out in those instances.
And the next one we added would be damage to personal property. Essentially, it's up to five hundred dollars to replace watches, eyeglasses, contact lenses, or dentures. So if you're in the line of duty, you're wearing glasses, you're putting out a fire, and you damage your glasses, we will reimburse up to five hundred dollars. That's very key to that, it's also per review of the fire chief and myself to approve that. So, you know, you're wearing a LoLX out-on-the thing, and you break it, it's not going to fly, so I'm not saying it's going to happen. The last one that's of a financial impact are two things. We are also going to offer a buyback of a week of vacation. If you have three weeks of vacation on the books, we will buy one back. And what brought this about, what was happening, we get to the end of the year and I get this stack of papers on my desk, because current policy states if you don't use all of your time, you lose it, unless the mayor approves you to roll it into the next year. We've gotten a lot better about not having that problem, but now I'm offering the option of saying, hey, why don't we buy back one of those weeks? Because a lot of times the guys don't, they can't even use all the time that they have. So this is a nice way to say, hey, we'll buy a week back from you, and then we can not lose it or not roll it. So it's always a hurt when you lose time like that, so it's never going to be a benefit to us when we do that.
And actually, you can make an argument that it's a cost savings to the city, because that's non-pensionable. Plus, we may come take their, you know, the second Tuesday of November, they're sitting home, and now I'm paying overtime to fill their spot. So we're paying pension for them to sit home, then paying pension on time and a half for the person that backed them.
It's complicated, but it's actually going to be a cost savings, if you look at the big picture of why we're doing it and how it's working.
Well, if it's banked at a lower pay rate and you continue to get raises, pays out at a higher rate.
Oh, it doesn't carry over that long, it would just be into the next year.
Okay. They have to use it within the first quarter, but again, that creates a whole other issue.
Creates staffing issues.
Because again, we, you know, we've been shorthanded, or people get sick, or staffing is short, we go into the next year, and we don't have enough staff to accomplish what we do. So the costs go up, so now we're saying, we'll buy back, but it's not a day, two days, a three, it's a one week. And I think we may see some good things come from that. The last but not least, we are adding Juneteenth to the holidays. I was advised through the attorney that's working with us on it that that's something that should be added and was requested, and we did grant that to be another holiday. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Any questions on this?
The union's good with it.
They signed off.
Did you say four, three, and three, or four, three, and four?
Four, three, three. Four and twenty-three, three and twenty-four.
I guess there is one thing, it's really not financial, but I worked with the union on it, with the Labor Management Committee, and they've already picked all their time off for next year. That was to manage that time, to eliminate the carryovers and stuff like that, and to share the wealth. So the younger guys have a shot to get, the way the, the union came up with it and I approved it, you know, they get to pick one week and then it goes to the next senior guy. All the way through the roster first, because we had junior guys that, they were looking for ten years until they got time off in the summer, which I didn't like. So, and that was a big thing, and it, you know, that was really agreed upon even before we went into negotiations through Labor Management, so I think that's going to be good for morale for those young guys.
Absolutely.
I think we've got a more fluid process now, and I think this is a good boost of morale, that we're getting it done early, and everyone's happy and signed off, and this is all good stuff.
Also eliminates a lot of administrative work and payroll, HR, finance.
Stuff that had to be manually done, now it's a little more automated.
Well, when you do retros, you have to do it per pay, and then you have to, and you have to report that to OPNF, Ohio Police and Fire, per pay. It's not just a one-time, here's your check.
Yeah.
So, a lot of calculating.
Alright, well, if we read this one, two, three today, we will know whether or not this is the first fire contract to pass. So is everyone amenable to one, two, three today?
How many?
Jeff, Mrs. Tully?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, and then the new, the new compensation schedule or the list? Mark, did you want to talk about that or that? John, anyone?
Well, it was a team effort putting it together, that was for sure. As you might be aware, there are a lot of changes over the last two years with different sections, so those have all been finally added to the big.
I think there were six separate amendments, starting in its four dash twenty twenty-one, which John's talking about, have all been rolled into this. Those aren't new, but it's the first time you're seeing that rolled out in one document.
Easier to go to one document than to have to go and pull four separate documents, like, oh crap, I forgot about that.
And to remember that there's four separate ones.
And maybe in the future, we might just amend this piece as a whole.
Exactly, for the next three years anyways.
Yeah, if there's any changes.
Twenty-three to twenty-five, right.
But we tried to build in enough flexibility, so we don't, unless we're adding a position somewhere. So that there's not a need to come back to so often. We did bump up the minimums more than the four percent, because they were kind of out of whack to begin with. They're not going to hire somebody for.
Nine, what is it, nine dollars was their lowest or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's minimum wage, but even pay grade three, eleven forty-eight, I mean, Amazon's paying. That's still lower than, I wanted it to be, but I didn't want to make it a huge, huge change. And an example would be, say, I'll use myself as an example, pay grade thirteen. The range was sixty-five thousand to a hundred and twenty-five, let's say. So you have to put that in a paper, because that's in your ordinance, so if you're advertising for a finance director from sixty-five to, you know, somebody's thinking, oh god, they could pay me sixty-five, I'm not going to waste my time. So we bumped it up a little bit, and then the rest is just four, three, three. And you think, we might have to add the vacation buyback to this later? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We could do that.
Do you think that's rolled over to the administrative employees?
It typically is, yeah.
It is, I'm worried.
So that would be one small change, unless you're on, change on the floor? No?
It might be a separate code section, actually.
Yeah, is that not something we'd have to vote on? I mean, I know it's typically done.
What I would do, if that ends up being the case, we'd look at one sixty-one, and there may be some specific sections in there that we could modify instead of this non-union pay ordinance.
Okay, just to be clear, whatever we agree with the unions, the non-union people, we extend the same thing to them, so that's why he's saying that.
Yeah, so that was, it might be the only thing I can see other than, no, that's it.
Mark, what were you suggesting about us changing the way, was it just what you were talking about, just changing this ordinance? Every three years, instead of doing it piecemeal?
So normally, the way the city has done this, it's the non-union pay ordinance, it's passed, so the last one was passed in twenty twenty-one. And basically, that's the placeholder going forward. This one is a little bit different than the city's traditionally done, because it has a three-year specific timeframe with specific rates for those three years. So I think the thought process, as Mr. Veras indicated, is this is a little bit forward-looking, and you're not going to have to come back and hopefully amend it as much as we did previously, unless you're adding positions or a thing like that. At the end of twenty twenty-five, it'll probably be a good idea to have some discussions. If we're going to have another three-year, you want to leave it in place, and if you want to leave it in place with the twenty twenty-five numbers, you know, we'll have a discussion on how to do that by motion or whatever at the time, but we're obviously a couple of years away from that, so.
And please be here in here.
Well, and if things happen financially, we always have the ability to come back.
And amend it, yeah.
Down or up. So if you pass it, it's good for three years, but you do have the ability to alter it. With the way the world's going, you can't guarantee that the twenty-five money won't be at this point in time.
The last one was a two-year, it did have both tables in this.
Yes, it did.
Just in case you were.
Second.
It sounded like maybe you didn't think it might have, but it did. So we're just adding one year.
How many amendments?
Oh, about seven, I think, chief, how many amendments, rather?
I'm counting these ones.
That's not fair.
Hopefully, our staffing is pretty well set, because we've done so many changes in service and parks and rec and everything, so hopefully we'll be set for a while.
I think our parks and recs will have to have a revision, I know Jason has a bunch of changes, so.
Again?
We're changing the whole thing.
Because minimum wage went up, and then some other things.
But that's a separate, that's not on this, right?
No, it is, it absolutely would be on that.
It's complicated, but the rec staff was under a different set of rules than the rest of everyone else, so it's a legal thing.
They raised minimum to what, fourteen?
Ten, ten.
Ten, yes.
If you recall, we had to give raises out to the rec staff because they weren't part of the non-union staff.
Okay, there, take a look at that.
So we had to adjust them, because it was all screwed up, the previous director.
That's why we had to bump up that minimum.
Proper adjustments when they need to be made, and it screwed a lot of things up, so we had to go back and fix a lot of that.
So are they part of the non-union staff then?
They are part of the non-union staff, but they're not part of this non-union ordinance.
Okay.
It's not a straight four, three, three for.
This is complicated, but Mark will.
Seasons.
Yeah, you guys will loop me in, I'm sure.
Mark will.
Sort it out.
Just so you know, Mark, this is coming.
But one way, an example on the first page at the bottom, one way we made this more flexible is part-time clerk in the finance department. I mean, I have one, but they didn't know where to place Vinnie, and some part-time help I got in the summer, so I said, okay, I'll take it, because I manage my budget, and I could squeeze them in there. Well, we made it as needed instead of the number one, so just some flexibility there.
There was an adjustment that you wouldn't notice, I think it's section five, where it talks about the independent contractors in the parks and rec department. It had previously had a reference effective, I think it was, I forget what month it was, in twenty twelve, but obviously, we're way past that, that language's a little antiquated. So we modified, had to say these independent contractors shall continue to be paid, instead of ending that twenty twelve reference, but non-substitute.
And Jen, you noticed that, like, you printed out the latest copy, right? This is version three of this, remember? There was just kind of inconsequential stuff that got changed, you know, there was just some typos.
I knew there was language that changed, but the download didn't.
Yeah, exactly, so we're just going to go with this one. Any further questions on this, guys?
Can I ask that next year, this is reviewed, so that we have three meetings, this really should go out to the public with three meetings so they can see her. But because we're making it effective January first, we can't do three meetings.
True.
So for the public, because the public has a real say in wages, and they're the ones who pay it.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point, Jen, so please make it over that, sir.
And please be here.
Yes.
You're having too much fun today.
Alright, so that being said, you're good with one, two, three then, Jen?
I'm not. I, this really should have been put four when we were doing the budget. To show how it impacted various, because you're giving raises everywhere.
It really kind of was, it's built in, I don't have to amend.
No, but we didn't talk about it, we should have had it.
It's built in, because I did, I do not have to change the budget for this, so it is built in.
This is something that's important for the public to have voice.
Well, we're making it over that for the next, next time.
And I agree with you, but it is built in, so from a dollar standpoint, but I agree, it, you know, it should be a three, three reading.
Things like that are not one, one, two, three.
Right.
Well, that being said, are we going to give it the one, two, three today, just to get this done, being that it is marked as in effect?
It doesn't happen till the floor.
But whether or not we do one, two, or three does, so can, can, can Mr. Garvis propose a third reading?
I don't think you have a choice, because it's effective.
If you wait on this.
Two weeks.
Then you're going to make things more complicated for finance, because then there's going to be retro.
I agree, I'm just making sure that we have a consensus.
That's why they have computers with programs that do that, trust me, it's not as hard as it used to be.
Well, I'm going to make the exact decision.
Mom was penciled. No, I'm afraid not, I would love for it to be accurate, but not so.
Who helps Patty with those numbers?
I mean, finance does.
Couple other things then, first I wanted to bring up this, the ordinance that we talked about a few months ago, was that Vinnie had proposed that we go back to the rental inspections. Does anyone have any input on that from Mark? Do you want, do you want to just, you know, have him write something up based on what we've got here? What had been amended out? Do we want to go back to where it was before it was amended out?
It was repealed.
Yeah. Does everyone have any, I mean, did everyone look over this as before? Do you want Bob to speak to it?
Yeah, I mean, he spoke to it one other time.
Yeah, I really think that registering rentals is important for our safety force. Every home is subject to the exact same standards, rentals wouldn't be subject to any more standard than any other property in the city. And I'd want to be really clear with that, we wouldn't look at rentals as a rental, a rental is a non-owner occupied property, and they would be held to the same standard as an owner occupied property. But as far as registering them, I think that's a very, very important thing to do, we'd want to know who's living where in the event that there would be some sort of an incident or an emergency. You know, we gather information on the rentals, we turn it over to our safety forces, so if there was a problem, they would have access to that. And they'd have access to the owner, because the owner's not, you know, not behind the place. But as far as like inspecting them, do they need to be inspected more often than any other home in the city? We're complaint-driven in a lot of cases, so you'd want to single out a rental property over any other property in the city. I have some reservations on that, because people might take advantage of that simply because it's a rental property.
Advantage how?
You know, I think when people know something's a rental, they tend to look at it very discriminatingly. And it's not necessarily a bad place, I mean, we have a number of rentals, and I checked with Chris Hall on the complaints that we've gotten. We've gotten complaints on exactly two this past June. So that tells me that maybe, maybe the rentals aren't in as bad a shape as people might think. But again, I don't non-support a registration program, but I just want to be clear that rental properties are properties within the city, we hold them all to the same standard, we're complaint-driven. So we would go ahead and we would react to them in the same manner we would to anybody else, and not do anything over and above, just because it's a rental.
I have a question for you. When my house was built, I had to get an occupancy permit, and I believe the city came in and looked at the house before they did that, to make sure that bare minimums were met, right? If my house was sold to another buyer, would they go through a similar inspection of my house?
That, yeah, that would be different, that's a point of sale.
It is, but my, I guess my question to expand on that is.
The banks usually require us to make sure.
We only do exterior, right?
Yeah.
We don't do interior inspection.
We do exteriors, yeah.
Yeah, there's no interior.
Yeah, and the rental, I believe, was an exterior inspection.
Well, my thought was with the rentals, would you do that when a lease ends and a new tenant would come in, to determine that that house is still?
You wouldn't even know that.
Yeah, I guess.
You wouldn't even know that. And that's part, that's part of why the registration would be a good thing, because at least we have access to the owner, as Mr. Roddick said.
And the other problem Chris was having, because we had quite a few, I don't know why this year it dropped, but there's one house that finally got sold. But when he would go to them, because grass wasn't cut, that everything was just a wreck, I don't own it. Why are you coming to me? And we didn't know who the owner was, so Chris was like frustrated, because he continually was calling around, trying to do, but they didn't care.
So how do we initiate a rental registration? How do we know when that turns over? You know what I mean, when someone decides to move out and just start renting their house?
To do that?
Self-reporting?
It is. I initiated a rental program in my days in Richmond Heights, and we actually publicly advertised that you are required as of January first, if you have a property that you lease or you rent, you need to report it. The response to that was relatively poor. And I ended up dedicating one inspector for four hours a day to go ahead and track. And it became, it became a multitude of work, you know, we managed to do it, but it took about a year and a half to actually track all of them. And that city had a lot more rentals than we have. I do believe that we've got a good tracking of rental properties in the city right now. I think Chris Hall does an excellent job of tracking not only rentals, but everything that he does.
How many do we have, Bob, do you know?
I think it's about sixty-two.
But the number has been going up.
Yeah, there was some company, so you all are aware, there's one in my neighborhood, my good friend that moved in there, became a good friend of mine, lives there. And it's one of those big companies, and they're buying up stuff, even when the economy's bad and the market's high as heck, but I can tell you, they don't take care of that property. You got me thinking about that, because there's a deck on the backside of it, he's told them, it's rotted, and they're not coming to fix it.
No, they buy them and they rent them out, or they try and fix them.
If I told you what the red ones, you wouldn't believe.
They don't always fix them.
So does this give us the ability to go after the companies that are failing to take care of their deck then?
It's whoever owns, it's whoever owns the property.
We have that, we have that.
They have the ability now.
But we're doing this because in some cases, we don't know who the owner is? Or what's the, what would be the reason to do the ordinance that's being discussed?
You mean, let's see, for.
What would be the reason for us to.
Reenact.
To reenact this, these items that were repealed before, to have this rental registration?
Yeah, you know who the owner is, because the property records are in front of the county, right?
Not necessarily, I think we ran into that where we don't know who owns the property.
They don't have to register with the county, from what I understand, I'm making some phone calls way back when I first started looking at this project. There's also, whatever they call it, what do they call the county law, an ordinance or a resolution, what do they call it?
They'll pass an ordinance or a resolution.
Okay. The county, Summit County already has one, and from what I understand, that if an owner of a rental property wants to evict somebody, and they're not registered, the court will hear it, the local court will hear.
So that's their impetus to register.
But the fiscal office should have a deed with the owner listed.
It couldn't be an LLC registered with statutory agent who has a physical address of a PO box in Florida, got it?
We have had trouble finding owners of properties. We, we have had trouble finding owners of properties.
Got it.
Because of LLCs and transfers.
But the best we can do with, with amending this is that we hope we get a few more rental contacts.
You'd have something out, you'd have something on, in ordinance that would indicate that, you know, if you're.
And since Chris is already up on it, it wouldn't be as much of a burden as what you experienced at Richmond.
That would be exactly right.
It helps Chris.
Yeah.
He does a hell of a job with this.
So do we want to just go with the registration, or do we, do we want to bypass the inspection, the one, three, two, seven, four B? Do we want to, to Bob's, you know, suggestion, do we want to not require extra inspections?
I, I know one of the things that Chris, if we put this back into ordinance, doesn't necessarily think we need, and that's a fee.
Okay.
He's not, like, you know, in talking with Chris, he's not exactly positive thinking on having a fee to register.
I think that, I mean, I, I would think that there should be some sort of a fee.
I do too. I think there should be some kind of.
Something, something to manage the paperwork, at least, but sometimes when, when you give people something for free, they don't bother with it, because it means nothing to them. And what we would actually do is, we would send out notice at probably this time of the year to, as a notification to those properties that we know are rentals, as a reminder that they would have to submit an up-to-date listing by, let's say, the end of January. And we, we would go and track them.
So Vinnie, do you want to work with Mark and Bob on getting, getting something written?
Vinnie, let's already work.
He is, yeah.
So my, my understanding, so we discussed this, I can't even remember how many council meetings ago. Council was gonna review it and individually let me know if anybody had any specific feedback on whether they want to reimplement the original legislation, like you're discussing, or had some different version. I didn't hear anything from anybody other than I thought this was kind of permanently tabled. So if we want to do it again, based on the conversation tonight, I'd say, Bob, why don't you and Chris work with the mayor? And maybe Vinnie put together a draft to present to council. I can obviously assist with any language, and then you guys can review it once that's done. That's fine.
Good, yeah. I mean, like we said, it's the last time, we're in a hurry with it, but, you know, I just didn't want it to fall by the wayside, so I should put some work into it.
And it does help the emergency services, because, and I went and talked to Chief Golden, and he'll say, that's a rental. And I go, how do you know that?
Right.
And he said, but there's this house, and I don't know if it is a rental.
Uh huh.
You know, and when you're getting complaints about things going on at various homes, and then if they're not there, take for example, the house on Shepherd that caught fire. Well, they were under renovation, but who really owns it?
Yeah.
Have they sold it yet, or hadn't they sold it yet? And it's still under renovation.
No, I can do that. So same offer, if anybody has any thoughts after looking at it again, and they want to reach out to me, you know, I'd be happy to.
We'll reach out.
All right, the other thing I wanted to mention, Mark, do you want to quickly mention charter review?
Right, so I, I know we've mentioned this a couple of times throughout the year, but 2023 is a charter review year section. And I think it's eighteen oh two of the charter, requires there to be a charter review commission every five years. Last one was in the spring of 2018. I'll be issuing council a letter outlining the process, but the basic concept is, the traditional is not in the charter, but the traditional method of selecting a commission, each of the elected officials gets to appoint a resident. There is one council representative that serves on the commission. That's all put into an ordinance, passed. Ideally, you have the charter review commission meet in the first quarter approximately of the year, with an eye towards getting any amendments on the ballot in November, which gives them approximately a four-month window if they get started in February or March. So, you know, again, think about who you may want to select and recommend for inclusion in the ordinance to create the committee.
We can also recommend amendments too, right?
So it's really up to the commission who they want to seek input from. I think traditionally, you know, whoever you select, you probably have a conversation with about, you know, this is kind of what I'm thinking, and they can, you know, discuss it or not discuss it at the, at the commission. And they're public meetings, so anybody can show up, you can show up if you want and say, you know, I think this is a good idea or a bad idea.
I submitted one in writing, and I came in and.
Yeah.
Oh, was open to any questions that might have been asked, why, what's the reason behind it? And they accepted it, and it was on the ballot and it passed.
And in 2018, it was actually convened early.
Right.
Because the administration had, I think, five different proposals that they were requesting a commission to consider.
How and when do we choose the, the council representative? Does that have to be part of the next, the ordinance?
Do it at any public meeting you wish. You can do it by motion, you can do it by legislation, however you.
So we can just do that when we elect officers next, next meeting?
Yeah, that's, I think that's how we did it last year.
I think that's.
Now, where'd you go?
Make that down, guys.
I agree, that's how we've done it in the past.
Same time as office.
And I'm disappointed we've just gone that way.
Okay.
Sounds solid.
And then the last order of business in the last few minutes here, we wanted to talk about the possibility of council extending a donation to the Northfield Historical Society. Jan and I talked about it, Mark and I talked about it, Mayor, John. Jan, what's, what's your plan here? What are you, what are you thinking you would like to do? And, and her and I have talked about it, and I, and I agree with what, what she's thinking, so just know that.
Yeah, we talked about, I said, you know, I think it should be an annual contribution. I also talked about the fact, isn't it unusual that most people don't know it exists? And that's kind of sad, because it's history. And they basically take the history of all the communities. We have the Longwood Manor House, but they just take care of the park. You know, they don't really go into, gee, when Nixon came down.
Yeah, Jan, I saw that.
They would have.
She watched Nixon drive down eighty-two.
I have pictures of it.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, they came down, you know, they came down, come on, the, the station.
Was he a chief then?
The train station, hour at the corner. People don't know about this stuff. So I think it's important that we support them. They did spend a lot of money when I looked at their background on keeping the house. The only thing I said we need to verify is that the school will continue to lease, because the school owns the building, because they bought the property and built, what is it? No, Northfield Elementary.
Yeah, I checked the board office.
So they still own the building, but they lease it to them for one buck. I just want some guarantee that that's not going to change, or.
That's a good point, because the schools could one day want to just sell that property and invest down to three schools.
So I think we need to get them involved in ensuring. But my bottom line is, I think, and I, I had recommended, we give a thousand ballots. Have that up straight in here.
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate, because I heard, I overheard conversation on this exact subject when it came up in the very beginning. That building in that organization is not located in the city of Macedonia. The Manor House is, that group is, and we don't have an annual budget, an annual number that we donate to them every year, but now we're gonna take a thousand dollars.
Well, we could do that, however, add up all the bills of all the money we already put in that house that they were supposed to do.
Okay.
And they didn't. We're into thousands of thousands.
I'm, perception.
I know.
Okay, perception.
I have no problem with that, but I also, as I took to Jessica.
But we do own that building, right?
Then why do we pay for the cemetery? It's not Macedonia.
Another point that Jan, that, that Mark had brought up, is that we do have the ability to look at their, you know, we can ask them for their financials.
It's a joint cemetery.
Yeah.
We can also ask them specifically, what materials are you housing, that, that, you know, you know, the building, what kind of history of, physical history of Macedonia you have? What kind of outreach do you do, or education that you do, that includes the people of Macedonia? They do do the third grade walkthroughs.
And what more could you do if you have the financials?
Yeah, exactly.
I've also recommended that perhaps we include a board like we do for the cemetery, where we have a representative from each community that gets together, just like you do with the cemetery, not being assessed, because I'm not a fan of our assessment process.
You don't like the, the breakdown, huh?
Yeah.
Me neither.
The cemetery's not here, but we pay the majority of the bills.
Right, we've been through that before, that conversation.
So Jan, would you be willing to connect with the, the woman that, that came here and spoke?
Yeah.
And learn a little bit more, and maybe even present to us a little bit about what you find, you know, what they're doing specifically for Macedonia? Or even as part of the whole, just as Macedonia. So we can go back to the residents and say, this is why it's important, you know, it's not just Northfield.
You know, I've known the building's been there, I know the sign's been there, I've never been in there.
Me neither.
My accountant was next door.
I don't think we did it in school.
And the library's right there.
Did you go there in school? We didn't go there in school.
So in, in the same token, you know, would part of our requirement be if we, if we enter into this venture, that maybe quarterly, or at least twice a year, that they, like the cemetery does, you come in with a report?
Right.
That somebody, you know, on whatever timeline that we pick, would have to come back with a report?
It's an annual report for the cemetery.
Okay, that's fine.
That would be nice.
And we should.
And like I said, I was just playing devil's advocate on what I was, what I was privy to before.
Yeah, could we get an annual report from the Manor House? Because we don't get a report from them. And have they still filed, do they still file their nonprofit? Because we're supposed to get a copy of that every.
They need to.
They do, so.
We've asked that.
When John, when John was president of that board, he was in here all the time, giving us a report.
I know, but we haven't.
Yeah, that, that was.
We haven't seen anything from them.
We still haven't seen a fina, we still haven't saw a financial, we won't gather, you know, activity.
Well, that comes to the mayor's office by ordinance.
Did the city not give the Manor House a large sum of that?
But.
I understand it was differently required revenue.
It was not taxpayer-funded dollars, that's why we'd be. But the only thing I would ask with this is that, we, just like everything, Jan, you always say, you're the, you're the holder of this one, public input. I want to know what the public thinks about this. It's nominal in the grand scheme, but they should weigh in and say, hey, this is a good idea, or eh, not so much.
Because the public was not the biggest supporter of all that money going into the Manor House, because it's been well, for years and years and years. And then they said, we're gonna open the, the second and third floor. You can't. You don't have an elevator.
Right.
It's not handicap accessible. We used to store soccer stuff on the top floor.
If we're able to present to the city, to the residents, here's what we get for, you know, here's, and I think.
Well, I, I'm not suggesting we pass anything without all the input, but I would like to talk to Northfield and Safer.
Be more inflectionate.
Because I think it should be another group.
In between with inflection.
Distinction, the city hasn't made a donation. I think the city's intentionally not made a donation. The previous legislation was to appropriate a thousand dollars in funds, and that was for a specific event, a bicentennial that this group was having.
Right, so that's the last time that the city gave money to the Historical Society, was for like a bicentennial celebration.
For a specific purpose that the city was aware.
So it was specific. So that's why, that's why Mark suggested to me that, you know, when we do decide, we need to know exactly what our money is going to. We can't necessarily dictate, I mean, we can dictate, but they can say, you know, you can't exactly dictate.
But it's similar, it's a.
Well, you could, you can call it, you know, education upkeep.
Yeah.
You know, whatever else you, you, you put on it. I mean, you could, you can, your market.
Well, like Mark had, Mark had mentioned, like, maybe they have pile cabinets with pictures in there, that we need to, you know, they need to pay insurance on their building to make sure that, or whatever.
It's the same as we do with the cemetery. We get a budget.
Yeah.
And then we base, our money, they have to show us what they're spending it on.
So Mark, are we able to put restrictions on, like, if we gave them some dollar amount annually, can we say this money can only be spent on the following things? Kind of like the settlement goes to cities?
Sure. Yeah, it can be remarked.
Yeah, we do that with the, with the cemetery.
And then they would come back with their yearly report that they did it. All right, well, thank you very much, guys. That was, that was a good meeting, and we'll see you on the floor.
Hello, welcome to the December 8th council meeting. It is 7:32 PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
If you now all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance with us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, next on our agenda is a little bit of fun this evening. Generally, in the past, we recognize sports, and it's no secret that I'm a big sports fan, but I also enjoy other things, and I had the opportunity to go to the Puffs performance, which I was thoroughly impressed with, so tonight I wanted to recognize them. But I want to add a little couple of things in there. I had watched Harry Potter back in the day, and that's what Puffs was based upon, and I had forgotten a lot of things, and during the, the play, I was lost on a lot of things, I'm not going to lie, but after going back and watching it, it made a lot of sense. So Abby Krasinski has, has been a great help with a lot of these things, but I'm now on the third movie, and I don't know what the parcel tongue thing is yet, but I'm told it's coming, so I'm anxiously awaiting that. So I'm going to ask that you all come up here with me, and I can do a proclamation for you. You don't think you're going to sit there the whole time, right?
Maybe they're performing. Do they sing? Up there. Do you guys sing? The sports kids are like, we don't want to go up there. The drama kids are like, yes, let's go up front.
So I have a list of your names, but if you guys could just keep your names and introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate that.
I'm Ryan Zwing, I'm one of Chris's production positions in the show.
I'm Julia Delaney, I'm the assistant director of the show.
Hi, I'm Brendan Barber, and I live in Oliver.
Hi, I'm Abby Krasinski, and I play Hannah and others.
Hello, I'm Claire, I play Diny Jones and others.
Hi, I'm Katie Hirsch, and I play Sally Perkfield.
Hi, I'm Kate Jones Elliott, I play narrator.
Hi, I'm Gabby Churchidge, I play Suzy Bones and Harry.
Hi, I'm Grace Dorick, and I play Maggie Jones.
Hi, I'm Alcato, I play Helen and others.
I'm Brad Jeffler, I play Mary and others.
I'm Isaac Yarrell, and I play Jake Finch and others.
One time, probably an athlete born in Omaha.
I'm Roger Gayle, I played Snape and others.
He all did very well, but I wanted the British accent sometimes. He's an A- he's an A- he's an amazing actor. He all did great, but that was amazing. I'm a little biased, because I think he had a good accent. So I'm going to read a proclamation for you guys.
Make sure you read it with the accent.
I actually was doing it after I left the play, but I'm not reading it. After hearing you guys do it all the time, I went home and I was doing it, I was like, I want a swat, say. So it reads, whereas community theater has a great deal more impact on a community than most people realize, and whereas it encourages interest in all the performing arts and fosters budding talent in these fields. Whereas Nordonia Drama Club is an extracurricular, I can't speak, extracurricular organization at Nordonia High School, producing two main stage productions a year, a ball play and a spring musical. Whereas over a hundred high school students participate in drama production annually, hosting summer camp programming for kids age three to eight, that is overseen and organized by Nordonia High School students. Whereas the Nordonia Drama Club is a member of the Dazzle Awards at Playhouse Square, and recently they collected $320 to the Emergency Assistance Center. Thank you very much for that, that's a great organization, we appreciate that. And now therefore I, Nicholas Mullner, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, do hereby proclaim December 8th, 2022, to be Nordonia Drama Day in our city, and urge all citizens to join us in observance by showing our appreciation for the contributions of our local drama association and welcoming communities theater visitors from other areas. Thank you very much, and congratulations. You're not even about that either. What was the game of Nordonia principle? You've got to have some words of encouragement, too, right?
Words of encouragement? Okay. You're saying stuff about me, or am I going to say something about you?
How was your friend? If you knew what they're talking about, Tom Hager right now, so.
Yeah, okay. So I too watched the whole production, because it was, it was very involved, and if anyone that was there knew, it was very intimate, and that, that, well, I happened to catch the mannequin. But everyone was seated on stage, and that is very daunting and tough for our thespians and our actors, actresses for sure, because of the proximity of the audience to the cast. And we were just so impressed, and I know that Chris would have wanted to be here, and he is, he will be back, but he was so proud of you, and he said, will you go in my place? I was like, yeah. So I really appreciated so much, what a nice performance you did, and an awesome job. And your accents, you do, you do leave there, Mayor, you leave there talking like the Queen's English. So, but we appreciate it, and of course, thanks for being awesome with, not only your studies, but the extracurriculars, and we know that that's what really makes you that well-rounded student, and you're going to go places. So, looking forward to more productions. Thank you, and thanks, Matt, for doing this.
Thank you, Eric. You guys, you guys don't have to sit through the hour and a half meeting unless you really have a burning desire. Really exciting stuff. Let's go. You can leave, you can literally say you can leave. Get up and leave. Come on, come on. Let's go, roll me. Staff, please sit. Have a cup of tea.
Hey, you guys are all pretty dramatic, go ahead.
Yeah. You're all dramatic.
If there's one thing I could say, they're not here, but it'll be recorded. If they're still interested and they're that much into it, Playhouse Square has high school ushers, so you get to see the plays for free, and it's called the Star Program. So they can just go online, look at the red, red coats at the Playhouse Square, it's a great way to see Broadway shows for free.
The teacher's pet step.
Take your drama and leave.
You have the keyfolds. You said we could leave.
We're only acting.
Yeah, you did. Let's go.
It's a good thing we haven't voted on any of their ordinance yet.
Not my team, my team can't go.
But no jokes, if you guys can have a chance, because I know they have another play, I think, in the spring, it was definitely worth it, it was really, really entertaining, so if you have that opportunity, go check it out, it was really neat.
Where's your accent?
It was really nice. The drive got tight, that's southern. Anyways, moving on. Next up on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of Thursday, November 10th, 2022.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have no public comments this evening, do we? Correspondence to the clerk?
Yes, sir. Have a letter from the City of Aurora Police Department to Chief Ripley of the Fire Department. Says, Dear Chief Ripley, it is my distinct pleasure to inform you of the excellent job firefighters Ryan Zapora and Rory Skolnick did during a recent incident in which they provided mutual aid to the Aurora Police Department. November 19th, 2022, an 88-year-old resident suffering from Alzheimer's managed to escape a memory care unit in Aurora by climbing from an unsecured window. By the time Aurora Police were notified, hours had passed and outdoor temperatures dipped into the twenties. After searching the grounds along with the immediate area, several drone teams were contacted to assist in the search. Shortly thereafter, drone operators from Macedonia, Richfield, Brimfield, and Copley arrived on scene quickly to assist. Copley, Brimfield, and Richfield worked as a team while the team from Macedonia worked a heavily wooded area to the north. At 15:25 hours, an image of a male was observed on the drone's flyer imaging resting against a tree in a wooded area. First responders were guided to the area and located the missing male. Male's medical condition had deteriorated and hypothermia had set in. The male was wet, cold, muddy, and his body temperature had dropped to a critical stage. Thanks to the efforts by all the drone teams, the male was transported to the hospital and has made a full recovery. It's without a doubt that the elderly male would not have survived had it not been for the quick response and diligent efforts of the firefighters Zapora and Skolnick. The family, I would like to personally thank you, and especially firefighters Zapora and Skolnick, for their quick response and diligent efforts. Sincerely, Aurora Police Department Chief Brian Beard. That's it.
Thank you. Great work, as always. Okay, we'll move right into pending of new legislation, starting with ordinance number 67.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 67, 2022, for its third reading by title only, please.
Second?
An ordinance providing for the 2023 annual appropriations for the City of Macedonia, Ohio.
Director Vares?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third reading of our 2023 annual appropriations budget, just want to thank council for, for their foresight and, and knowing that it's, it's a great best practice to pass your annual budget prior to that year beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I'd like to pass and post according to law ordinance 67, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 67 carries, and thank you, Director Vares, for all your hard work, and council for all the input to get to this, it's a lot of work that goes into that and time, so we appreciate all of your efforts and getting that to where we need to be, so we're going into the new year with a budget in place. Ordinance number 71.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 71, 2022, for its third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a Bosch Municipal Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to a higher revised code section 5709-40, 5709-42, and 5709-43.
So essentially, this is a third reading for the TIF. We have the, the TIF master over there, how many TIFs now, Mr. Vares?
TIF man?
TIF man, I'm sorry. How many TIFs have you done?
Over 70.
And this, this is another feather in your gaff to get this one done, and we appreciate your efforts on that as well, as long as this passes. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 71, 22, and post the same according to law.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 71 carries. Ordinance number 76.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 76, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 67, 2021, relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Macedonia for the period of January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022.
Director Vares?
Thank you, Mayor. As we mentioned in caucus, one small change here with the One Ohio opioid settlement. When it first came out, they advertised it like this huge settlement that you're going to get, and everybody's going to get their money, but you read into the weeds, and it's going to take up to 18 years to get your, your money to spend, so we had to amend the appropriation side of this, since we're not getting it all up front.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
And just to be clear, we hadn't, in this budget, we had the receiving of the money in the budget, but we had, had not assigned it to anything, we hadn't made any decisions, so it's not like we had something that we decided we were going to pay for with this, it's just, it was going to go into a line, and now the line is zero.
We were anticipating, say, a hundred six thousand, we appropriated a hundred six thousand, but then find out we're only getting eight thousand this year.
Yeah, so we hadn't, we hadn't decided on what to do with the settlement, yeah.
We are, we are working internally to find the designations through the Law Department, because it's very finite what you can spend these dollars on, so we are working on that currently from the administration side.
Yeah, little if any communities, at least that we've found have made any expenditures of these funds, or have authorized expenditure of those funds for specific purposes, so we'll keep an eye on that, too, for ideas.
Thank you. And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to pass and post according to law ordinance 76, 2022.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm sorry. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 76 carries. Ordinance number 77.
Mr. Mayor, I'd offer ordinance, or resolution number 77, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Robert H. Scott II to the City of Macedonia Board of Zoning and Building Code Appeals.
So basically, we had had an opening on the BZA for quite some time, we had put it on our website, and Mr. Scott has stepped forward to assume that role, which I know the commission will be very happy about, to have that extra person on there that was needed for so long, so he's very qualified, his resume is attached with council, and I think he'd be a great fit for it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law, resolution number 77, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 77 carries. Ordinance number 78.
Mayor, I wish to offer ordinance number 78, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Macedonia and the Macedonia Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 3947, for the years 2023, 2024, and 2025.
So essentially, we've been working on contract negotiations, there's five unions within the city, I've been able to work with the fire department and their union to get to the point we're at today, where we have agreed upon this contract, placed forward in front of council today. One, one note is very important, if this passes today, in my tenure, and I believe in the history of this city, it'll be the first time we have passed a contract before the year it begins. So it's a, it's a very monumental thing that we were able to accomplish this task and get to this point, so I'd be very proud if council would support that and move this forward. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number 78, 2022, to be adopted and posted, same according to law.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I want to thank council, I want to thank Chief Ripley, I want to thank the union for being a great help with all this and making history today, so this is a big deal, thank you very much, I'm very proud of that, and you guys should be, too. Thank you. Okay, ordinance number 79.
I'm sorry, I'd like to offer ordinance 79, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance establishing the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1st, 2023.
Director Vares?
Thank you, Mayor. We tried to mirror the length of the fire, and hopefully the other three, I'm sorry, other four that were negotiating, and we amended some of the minimums to make them more realistic, and as discussed in a council caucus, so it's about it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to pass and post according to law ordinance 79, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 79 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move right into the mayor's report. For November of 2022, the mayor's court revenue was $29,418.41. I'll be brief today with what I have to say in my report, I want to kind of put some, take a moment of silence after I explain this, but Mr. Susak, Mr. Paul Susak has passed away, he was a council member here, he was nominated on July 24th, 1980 to fill an unexpired term, following the resignation of Joseph Kacharsky. After that, he was appointed to the Civil Service Commission on February 25th, 1982, for a term that ended July 1st, 1987. Also to note, he was a chief of fire in Warrensville Heights for, chief, do we know how many years?
I do not.
Nonetheless, he was a chief in Warrensville Heights, and that's something to be very proud of, so if we can take a moment of silence to recognize Mr. Susak and his, his sacrifice to help people and what he did for our community. Thank you, and I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year, and as always, please, especially during the holidays, don't drive distracted, put the phone down, and drive the car. Moving into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission didn't have a December meeting as typical, so we'll be going back in January. Right now, our meeting is tentatively, tentatively scheduled for the third Wednesday in January, but we may be changing that as there is a conflict with a school board meeting that day, so keep an eye on the city calendar for that date, and if you want to know, as we get closer to January, you can shoot an email, or call Director Shattuck or myself, and we'll let you know what date we settled on, and we'll get that date on the calendar if it changes, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
We have one, do you know the date?
I thought I did.
Yeah. I can't open my Outlook at the moment.
I'm having the same issue.
The JUD committee will be meeting, I think, in the first week or two of January.
Yeah, our mandatory meeting for the, to start off the year.
That date will end up on the city's calendar, because apparently neither of us have it right now. Technically, it's 2022's.
2022's final meeting will be in January?
I thought you were going to say your Apple device was not functioning properly.
No, I just had to reinstall the Outlook app, and I don't have time to, end of the date.
And I just got an update, and I've lost a lot of stuff.
I believe it's 6:00 PM, January 23rd. That sounds, I thought it was 22nd, but 23rd.
Nonetheless, we'll post that up as well, so we'll get it out there as soon as possible. Okay, moving into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Leaves are wrapped up. Thank the Lord. We are doing some, you know, final sweep of the city and making sure everything's cleaned up, all the curbs, and some curb sweeping. Also, we are doing double check, triple check of snow equipment, getting ready for the impending doom that will come, as they tell me. And, and we've really spent, really, the majority of our time lately on Christmas lights, get out to the parks and city hall, it's absolutely beautiful, the guys have done a great job, so.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on that. Last Sunday, I was up pretty early, like, between 8:00 and 8:30 to go get my Sunday newspaper, and service department workers were out in 22-degree weather, one of which, Mr. Ron Farum was in a cherry picker.
That's cold.
Quite a bit off, off the ground, driving down the roadway in 22 degrees. I commend them all, thank you.
Yeah, they worked, they worked hard.
Yeah, the memorial park, the decorations this year are new, that looks fantastic, and Along 82, and this, and everything, and I can't wait to see what more you have at Longwood, you already, the rec center building looks amazing, so I can't wait to see what you guys have in store out there, it's going to be great. And also, I noticed you, like you said, you were cleaning up leaves, you were just going through neighborhoods and just sucking out the ditches, not even look for piles, that was great, that's something I've never noticed before, our neighborhood looks like there's never been a tree in it before, so, thank you.
I know a little bit about Christmas lights, and I think these look amazing.
And thanks to the service staff, you guys have done an amazing job, it's, it's really nice to see, and I don't want to steal Director Shattuck's thunder, so I'll, I'll save the rest for him.
Thanks, guys, for leaving me some, some stuff.
Director Gilati.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. As some of you may recall, we're in the planning process for a traffic improvement project at the intersection of Highland and Valley View. Thank you, Kyle. You can see on the screen there a map showing what the improvements are going to look like. As you can see, we'll be adding turn lanes at that intersection. We'll also be replacing the traffic signal with a new, modern, more efficient traffic signal to get traffic through the intersection faster. This construction is still scheduled for 2025. Reason we bring it up tonight is we are required to have a 30-day comment period for this project. So next week, we'll have posting on the city website letting everyone know that that 30-day comment period will then be open. Once the comment period is over, we'll respond to any comments that require a response. So if you have any comments, feel free to send them in, please.
Are you able to wait till after the first of the year to do that? Just because, you know, no one's really paying attention during Christmas and New Years and has time to take a minute to comment on city stuff. I mean, are we on a timeline here?
I mean, we could typically, we're at the point in the process when the comment period typically takes place. So I guess it's, you know, unfortunate timing. I guess that that's how this has landed. My personal opinion is we probably should just leave it as is.
All right. Well, we definitely don't want to delay this project, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, I'd hate for other parts of the process to, you know, get pushed behind a little bit.
But the key here is we got a grant for this and the amount, do you remember what the number was?
$2.1 million all total in outside grant funding we've received.
That's huge, and anyone that travels through the intersection will definitely be appreciative of this. I can't see there being too much negative, but I'll bite my tongue.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
All right. Director Shattuck.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm really excited to tell you guys that we have a little something going on this weekend. If you don't know about Winterfest, that means you're on Santa's naughty list and you haven't been approved to go. That's a joke, guys. Winterfest is this weekend. It'll be 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Longwood Park. We encourage everyone to show up early, drive safely, and please listen to our Parks and Service crews as they direct you on where to park. This is for your safety because it'll be dark outside, and we need you to follow our pathways. I think the, over the last, Director Wilson, I'd say over the last, like, month, we've had the Parks and Recreation staff as well as the service staff working together to decorate absolutely everything in this city, and the city looks phenomenal. If you, if you have not seen Longwood Park in the last week, you're going to absolutely see a completely different park if you go there starting right now. It is absolutely phenomenal. You will see how we've used the new shed that is out there as well as the new dock that is out there. And just so you guys know, the fountain has been taken out for the winter, for winterization purposes, so the fountain will not be going as you go to the park. That's just due to safety there so we don't break a brand-new fountain. So as you go through the park, you'll see a lot of improvements and a lot of great things going on. 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Santa will be there. Fireworks, we are aiming for 8:00 PM to start the fireworks just because we are expecting a big crowd, and we want to make sure that we get plenty of time to get the kids in. There's going to be some activities going on, hot chocolate, cookies, things like that. There's a couple other surprises that we're not going to tell you about. You just have to show up to learn about them because it's Christmas time, so we want some surprises. So please, come out, enjoy the event. We'll conclude with fireworks. We look forward to a great show. Definitely thanks to the Parks crew and service crew who have been outside for a month straight, no matter what the weather, whether it's rain, shine, sleet, hail, 22-degree weather as we learned about earlier. They've been outside the whole time, putting up all the lights everywhere, so kudos to them and all the work that they've done. And also, I want to thank the fire department for all their support, joining in for Winterfest and helping us out with a ton of stuff. They got some great surprises in stores, well. Chief Ripley, as always, has been great to work with in getting us set up, and we're really proud of this event that we're going to put on for the city. It's going to be a first annual, and can't wait to see you guys out here for that. Recreation-wise, the only update I wanted to provide to you guys was that all the flooring project has been completed, and the turf is getting used constantly. So it's been a huge welcoming to the facility, and it is, just for the record, it is not carpet. It is turf that you can utilize for workout purposes. So I just wanted to provide that piece of clarity, and that concludes my report. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. I want to reiterate that the Winterfest is not taking place here at City Hall. It's at Longwood Park. Also, and I think you're going to put this out on the social media outlets, but Santa will be there, and you can line up starting at 6:00, and Santa will arrive sometime thereafter, we're thinking 6:30-ish, I think.
Actually, we bumped it up.
So maybe 6:15?
Santa's probably going to be between 6:10 and 6:15 because we're expecting a lot of people.
And the reason I bring this up is in the past, we've had it here at City Hall, and it's a little chillier this time of year. So if you're planning to be there early and waiting for Santa, just know that you should dress appropriately for that.
And we will have warming stations as well as tables set up in the park area, just so people know, so there will be some opportunities to get warm.
Thank you.
What will be the location of the fireworks? People are asking about that.
It's a secret.
People want to know where they can observe them without having to come and park at the thing.
They are going to go off in the middle of the park, so it'll be at the baseball fields.
All right.
Mayor, there's a lot of safety that revolves around that, so if you're unsure, please ask a firefighter that's there or a policeman so you make sure you're not putting yourself in harm's way. We have to be very careful, and I want to say this, too. If you go into the hot zone, you, they will not shoot fireworks off, and you can delay the whole thing, and everyone at the festival will be waiting because you went into the wrong area. So if you're unsure of where you're supposed to go, just ask, please.
It'll be on the back fields, so the whole back lot will be closed. So you will be able to park in the front lot for baseball and then walk into the trail, park trail area. So, yeah, just stay away from the back two fields. That's the area that's closed down. And you'll be able to see them over the lake.
No more clues. Director Vares?
I was trying to get this, this new stopwatch to work for Jason, but, because he was way over his five minutes, but it didn't work. But.
Good thing that's a pointer.
Yeah. I wanted to thank council for, I think, five of the six related items on the agenda are finance-related, and most importantly, for approving the fire contract and the non-bargaining contract, not contract, ordinance. And I think in my 25 years as finance director, I've never been able to not do a retro pay. So it really is a big thing, kind of like passing the 2023 budget prior to the year beginning, but even, even bigger than that because it's a huge accomplishment. The mayor should be congratulated, chief. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank council for passing the contract. It was a big thing. The guys really appreciate it, and it's just something off everyone's table, and we don't have to worry about it for three years. So that's a wonderful thing. Side note, the letter that we received from Aurora Police Chief, as Chief Golden will confirm, he started his police career here as a part-time patrolman. We were not hiring full-time at the time. He went to Bedford, and now he's the chief in Aurora, so there's little home days there when he called me about that event. So the drone team has been called out now four times, successfully each time. They are learning each time. Tuesday, they did a demonstration for Rotary, and we found out that there is a drone class at the high school. So they're going to be visiting the drone class. Very popular, is going to save lives, and we're very proud and happy of that, with that. So I'd like to remind everyone, Clarence called, Santa is in fact going to be here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. So if you see Santa out and about, please be careful as you navigate in your vehicle. Put down your smartphone, dumb phone, GPS, whatever you might have in your hand, and it would probably be bad media if Santa would get struck by a vehicle. I'd like to thank everyone for the support of the program and wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holiday, and I will see you sometime before the first of the year. So, end of report.
Did you say put the Tom-Tom down?
I don't know what, I'm not old enough to remember what a Tom-Tom is.
Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. We're happy to announce we have 23 kids for our Shop with the Cop program, which I believe is going to be this Saturday. We appreciate the public support in that. We're able to take care of a lot of kids, so that's very helpful. And we have the four Tahos in, and I believe they're getting, what do you call it, striped? Decalled. Decalled as we speak, and hopefully, we might be able to pick them up tomorrow. So we'll see. But there is obviously some of the equipment that we ordered, supply chain issues, so we are hoping to possibly, maybe, keep your fingers crossed, have them on the street before next summer, so.
So.
Yeah. Hopefully by, by late winter, maybe. But supply chain issues.
I believe you've also located some Durangos. I think Sergeant Costello was able.
I have not seen him.
You've located some Durangos, apparently, so that's coming, too. If you don't have an opportunity, I think the countdown is close to the end here for the chief, so if you see him, make sure you wish him well because he's down to how many days?
55.
Who's counting?
Who's counting?
55.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to be back, and just want to say that HR is closing out '22 and preparing for open enrollment and so forth for '23. I wish everyone a happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodick.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items. Plan Commission meeting will be held in December on the 19th. There'll be two items on the agenda. One will be for the final design review for the Nordson Brack facade, and the second one will be the drive over for the Chipotle site. And I also want to add that the January meeting will be held on the second Monday. That'll be January 9th as opposed to the 16th of January, the 3rd, which is routinely what we have them in, meeting at due to the Martin Luther King holiday. That's all I have. Happy Holidays to all.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. 42 help desk tickets closed since the last council meeting. Major projects, I've added additional access points here in the building to beef up our Wi-Fi in a couple of spots. I also completed dumbing down all of the MDTs and the police cars from 5G to 4G so we can eliminate some of the coverage issues they were having throughout the city. So I've heard good things from all of them on that. Like to wish everyone a Happy Holidays and a Safe New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gaddati.
I know we discussed a briefly directed work session, but just for the residents at home, this is going to be a charter review year in 2023 as required by the city's charter that will involve, amongst other things, six residents to be appointed by council and the mayor, who will serve as the Charter Review Commission and make potential recommendations to council for amendments to charter, which would appear on the ballot in likely November. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Just have a comment to make. I have to be careful how I said this because last year, I invited the entire community to my house.
What time?
But I do want to say, other than between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM this coming Saturday, please feel free to stop by our house on the road in your car to visit our Christmas light display that runs from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM. If you, if you come, put your radio on at 87.9. It's synchronized to a mix of Christmas music. We actually, this year, have a very, really impressive Disney Princesses sequence, and it's just something we've been doing for four or five years now, and would love to invite everybody to swing by and enjoy it. Just be careful. We, 9821 Firestone Lane, thank you. We do have, unfortunately, very limited parking up there, and we are at the top of the hill by an intersection, so if it's crowded when you show up, you might want to come back a little later. And I wanted to commend the chief on the drone program. I have had an opportunity to see them train, and I'm very impressed by what they're trying to do with it, and I'm absolutely thrilled to hear that we've had four successful missions, especially this one that we just got a letter about. And I just wanted to elaborate on the Christmas lights. I really do mean what I said earlier. Every time I come down Summer Road in the morning to take my daughter to school, I see the Christmas lights on 82, and I'm blown away by them, so great job.
Also, can I separately congratulate Chief Golden? I've been in those shoes on Christmas Day. It'll be four years since I retired for the second and last time, and congratulations. I wish you all luck in the world and, you know, whatever your endeavors are from here on, and I know the feeling well.
Thank you. I'm not there yet.
I'd also like to thank you for all your hard work throughout all the years. Maybe now you'll have time to come to playhouse with your wife.
Maybe.
I ran into them as I was ushering, and I asked her how many days has left. She goes, oh, he tells me every day. I think you were down to count hours by then. The other thing I'd like to recognize, you may have noticed we have an extra member up here. Would you like to introduce him?
Sure. So we have our junior city council, and it's a tough time of year because I know there's five of them, and I know that four of them are in sports, and it's very difficult, but Vinnie Milliata has been a member of this from the start, and he's definitely committed to it, and comes a lot, and he's also become one of our seasonal employees because he gets to get out of school half a day and has a, has a strong drive to succeed in local government at some point, he says. And at some point, I'd love to hand it off to him, so hopefully that, this could be you one day, young man.
Thank you. And I'd like to say Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. The good part, it is not April 15th yet. That's John's holiday.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Your order.